I'd like to welcome everybody here on January 3rd, 2024, for a regular meeting, giving Pope Schools ISD 701. It's 3:30 PM Central Standard Time. That being said, we'll go to item 3. Pledge of Allegiance, please stand if you wish.
Pledge of Allegiance, this is the flag of the United States of America. This is your public health, which stands in front of the United States of America. And this is all for the routine of justice for our.
And happy New Year's Day. Okay, well, then we'll move to item 3. Reorganization of the school board required by state statute could occur the first Monday or most practical, practicable date before the passing. So we can do that one of a couple of ways. You can either get in the rule, everybody wants it to stay the same, we could do that. Otherwise, we will chair a third grader, both having self community.
I'm fine with how it is.
I'm fine with how it is.
I'm fine with how it is.
Item?
Unless Sarah.
So therefore, I'd look for a motion to start the year off with the same school board we had last year. We'll read the names just for the public. Is there a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion at the offices for the 24-year remaining.
Motion seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. I want to thank you. That's the first time in my 28 years that's been done like that.
Really? Yeah.
I thought we didn't.
I thought we did one change last time.
I think we did. I think I had something new or whatever.
So this is your name?
Yeah.
Director Berklich will be the chair. Director Coulter will be a clerk. Director Blatman with treasure and Director Nyberg is the chair pro temp. Is that right?
On the sub, there's someone for Jeff, I guess.
Next is a resolution for blanket bond resolved by the school board of ISD 701. The district purchase of blanket bond for $100,000 to cover the board members and school employees. All move.
Support moved by Director Coulter, supported by Director Blatman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Next is in regards to the salaries of the board members resolved by the school board of giving that the salaries of the school board members will be $400 per month payable monthly for regularly scheduled board meetings. The chairperson of the school board shall receive $450 per month payable monthly for regularly scheduled school board meetings and $50 per month shall be allowed for additional negotiation meetings and special meetings beginning with the 2023-2024 contract.
Support. Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Coulter. Any discussion?
Chair, is this an increase from last year?
We increased it last January.
Oh, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
So it's not an increase is the answer. Just so the public understands.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Next is the official newspaper for the school board of ISD 701. The Nsavi Tribune shall be designated the official newspaper of the school district to publish the proceedings of the meetings of the school board and legal notices and display advertising of the legal read. The officers are authorized to enter into contract quarters same.
So support moved by Director Blatman, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion?
One, go ahead.
Ladies, please.
I would just like to comment that there were quotes that were provided and actually the Nsavi Tribune came in less than this. And I don't know if Marie is here, but I just want to give a shout out to Marie because I think in the last year since she started covering our meetings, it's improved a lot. So, and I think she does a nice job writing articles.
Next is a resolution regarding the dates and times of school board meetings. The board of ISD 701 giving that the regularly scheduled school board meeting will be held on the first Wednesday after the first Monday of each month unless otherwise designated. The second meeting will be held two weeks after the first meeting unless that day is a legal holiday. The meeting will be held the next day when legal business can be transacted unless otherwise designated. The starting time will be 3:30 PM and the place will be the boardroom at the Giving High School unless otherwise designated.
Chair, no support. And we said that it, any further discussion? Any discussion?
You know, I have a discussion and it doesn't relate to the time, but it relates to meetings. So I don't know if it's after we vote on this. If you want me, the only thing I would like to do is at our December 4th, 2024 meeting, our truth of taxation, if there's any way that we can schedule it so it's not at the same time on the same date as the city's truth in taxation, I would like us to coordinate that. So if taxpayers want to come to bolt up the meetings, they can do that without giving what they have to put one or the other.
Well, we can do that. That's just anything from six o'clock, right? So we can.
That's what I'm saying, so we don't get to December and we don't get to.
There was a lot of problems this year.
That's what I was going to say. That being said, we can change these anytime. It's just a power people are going on. We have to change them.
That was it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. All the same sign.
Aye.
Does that oppose?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just same as last year.
Let them in and show.
Next, the resolution moving regards to payment of certain claims by the school board of ISD 701. The business manager shall be authorized to prepay certain claims taking advantage of discounts.
Support.
Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Blatman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Next is a resolution for electronic fund transfers. The school board of ISD 701, the business manager shall be authorized to pay through the use of electronic fund transfers and shall report to the same to the school board each month.
Support.
Moved by Director Gubarty, supported by Director Blatman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Following our two resolutions to appoint members to committees, the first is the Minnesota State High School meeting.
Can you say who curtain is on all these?
Yes.
It's me. Tell them that's me. Isn't it?
Yes.
I mean, I'll do it again. I didn't do it too much. We didn't have hearings or anything this year for any students or maybe one.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve?
All move.
Support.
Is the movement supported? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Next is an appointment to the MSB.
I'm Paul McLeod for Director Berklich. Seconded by Chris.
Is there a second?
Support.
Motion made by Director Nyberg, seconded by Director Gubarty. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Next is an appointment to the Title I Parent Advisory Committee.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to nominate Director Gubarty.
Support.
Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Blatman. Any further discussion?
We should ask if you want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, the same ones.
Well, that's great. I hope I try to rush you through before you have a chance.
Oh, sorry.
Just trying to get through it all.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Next is an appointment to the Community Ed Advisory Council. That is Director Nyberg.
And I would talk to her again.
Support.
Moved by Director Gubarty, supported by Director Blatman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Next is an appointment to the Religious Release Committee. Currently Director Berklich.
I'll make a motion that Chair Berklich continue on the Religious Ed Committee.
All seconded.
Motion made by Director Blatman, seconded by Director Coulter. A couple of weeks ago, I did check into that again.
Do we need this committee? I mean, why do we have this?
In case, say a priest or pastor or somebody from one of the nominations wanted to call up and ask somebody, I guess I'd be the go-between.
Yeah, wouldn't they work with the superintendent?
And they have, I suppose. Maybe if I said notice something and they would let her get or disagree and then maybe.
I just think, I think that's a committee that should be dissolved.
I agree.
It's ridiculous.
There was a time when.
There was a time we had buses of it, yeah.
Now you've got coupled.
Right.
Well, that was when they would just release two stuff.
And of course, we're going to release the kids that want to go, but it's just not a big deal anymore.
Do you have a meeting or anything?
Could telephone calls are probably two or three in 20 years.
Yeah. Is there, when can we dissolve this?
Right now, we're left to.
Oh, I'll make a motion to dissolve the Religious Release Committee.
I'll second that.
And for discussion, if something comes up, we have to do it again. Volunteers.
But we had a motion on the floor and a second. Should we like vote that and then vote to whatever?
Well, we didn't even vote on it.
No, we have a motion and a second.
Oh, so we have to vote on it.
I don't know.
You can withdraw the first motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
And this is a vote for the second motion. All in favor, quickly. Say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
This is why we want you running meetings.
None of us want to do it, John.
Next is an appointment to the District Health and Safety Committee, currently held by Director Coulter.
I've been on that for like several years. There's never been a meeting.
There is a requirement that we have a committee if an issue comes forward. So there is a state requirement that we have a.
Do we have?
Mr. Coulter, and then it would be Tyler if Tyler has to. A lot of that happens in-house. We have teacher representatives and different absentee representatives on safety committees. A lot of that happens in-house, but if something were to come to a board level, I think that's.
So do you have a safety committee?
We do.
We have to have.
Yes.
I mean, what is, who's on it? Tyler?
It's Tyler and reps from each building.
Do they meet regularly or not really?
They meet a couple of times a year.
Okay.
When I was on there, we met at least quarter of, sometimes more. Every school we do, Joe Arthur's. Then when Tyler got on, well, the last couple of years of Joe, we didn't do anything either with.
I mean, it seems super important, like that would be a super important committee that should be really active.
Yep.
I don't know.
Items get brought to Tyler and then he keeps a running list. They have a meeting, they address all the safety concerns.
I know he does it, yeah.
Now, I mean, safety in different contexts, will this also now include the things that are happening now that we don't have an RSO? Or is that safety part not coming into play here?
It potentially could. I mean, if, you know, if a high school teacher felt, you know, there was an issue with a door or, you know, maybe kids were getting in and out of the building during the middle of the day, that's something we'd bring forward and maybe we change locks, maybe we. You know, I have, there's a couple of teacher reps here and I know, I don't want to put it on the spot, but I know Mr. Sanders sometimes works with Tyler in particular with the science lab and the health and safety. Am I describing this correct, Mr. Sanders? Do you meet a couple of times a year and bring your concerns forward or is that not correct?
Last time I was on the safety committee was in the 1990s.
Okay.
Well, that's fine. Mr. Erickson is the chemical safety officer.
Okay. And then he works with Tyler and with IEA and they work together. It is a requirement that we have a health and safety committee. I do know that.
It just strikes me that in a big district like this with all these buildings and all these safety issues.
Right.
I mean, it's not just one safety issue. It's the science labs, it's the doors.
Right.
It's fire. It's everything. I mean, there's just so much safety.
And maybe we can talk to Tyler about giving that more.
Maybe, what ways are yours?
All right, give him an update, what he does and how he works to the class.
Yeah, that would be nice, yeah. Or with the meetings.
Mr. Chair, I wonder if, Mrs. Nyberg, I think this might be a really good idea.
Yeah.
May I just put forward?
Yeah.
If it was a scheduled meeting where minutes were taken.
Right.
It might be nice to have that to fall back upon for the district.
Yes.
And you could ask for volunteers, so those that would be interested. I'm not meaning to supersede, just making a suggestion of thought.
No, that's a good suggestion. I know when I went to the college, HCC, there was always a safety committee and it had reps from all the different areas and they went over their agenda and had minutes and it was very active.
Hold on, safety committee at the college first.
Yeah.
Well, maybe even to start with, like, kind of like the world's best workforce, whereas school board reps were informed of when the meeting is so we can attend. Maybe when they have their couple semi-annual meetings, if you're informed, then you can attend or get reports if they sent reports from IEA.
I'll give, I'll send you a little update on the process and where we're at and if it needs to be fine-tuned and brought up to a higher level, we can certainly do that. I know they meet, he may even have minutes.
I'm not insinuating that's not happening, but it would be better. I think it's a normal, formal thing.
I agree.
We should have it for sure.
On the flip side, I think we have to be careful when it's safety and security, right? Like, that's like stuff that we don't, I want to say it's non-public where we cannot talk about it at a public meeting for obvious reasons, right? So we have to be careful how much gets talked about here.
On some topics.
Yeah, because we can't, our vulnerabilities we can't talk about.
I'll make sure you're informed when they're meeting and then I'll also send an update to the board on what the process is and what it looks like and if we have to.
Maybe we can readdress it, yeah. Make the proper changes. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried.
Was there, was there a motion or a second?
I'll make a motion too.
A second. Now there isn't. It's in here. Okay, thank you.
All right, next is an appointment to the world's best workforce currently held by Director Blatman and Director Gubarty.
Do you both want to do it?
I would say, huh?
I would too.
I'll make a motion to nominate Directors Blatman and Gubarty to the world's best workforce.
Chair, all support. So movement supported. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Next is an appointment to the Negotiations Committee. Do not refer that last year. It has been Director Blatman and Chair Berklich. Then we always, at the time of negotiations, just sort of that up and make sure that that's the direction we're going. We're not negotiating this year, hopefully. I think we're done for now, so that's up to the board. If you'd like to throw that in, there could be other items that come up. There could be strategy items that come up throughout the year that might be nice to have that committee name as it currently is represented.
Well, it was Director Blatman and Director Gubarty.
No, not me.
It was, it was, yes.
Oh, that was for the, that's the final.
This is for negotiations.
I do think it should be the chair for sure.
Yes.
I'm not interested. I'm not a good person for that. I'm not a good negotiator.
Oh, I would absolutely stay on it. I think, and as the treasurer, I think it's a good combination.
Okay.
Unless.
Director Coulter and Director Blatman, they can be alternated as needed, something like that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
But you just, don't you want to be part of it since you're the chair?
Yeah, but there's two different things here. One is the negotiating committees, which isn't there. This is just the finance committee.
No, no.
No. That might issue.
So last year, we didn't. We didn't assign a specific.
Oh, okay.
And it currently is you. And can't let, I believe the board took action, I think. The board nominated you at a later meeting before we negotiated.
Yeah, so what do we have? About three of us on there or two or, well, like you said.
We can allocate the three.
Okay, then I nominate Kim and Director Coulter and Director Berklich.
Motion moved by, seconded by Director Gubarty. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Next is an appointment to the Chemical Health Advisory Council.
Is that still active?
I don't believe we.
I don't think it is.
Want to move away with that?
I believe we could, yes.
I'll make a motion if you want your chemical health council.
I'll second.
Been moved by Director Coulter, excuse me, seconded by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Next is an appointment to the AD and Art Department Committee. So Mr. Turner had asked to establish this committee and have board representation this year, and I believe he's already asked a couple of board members if they'd like to serve on this committee. The leaders, Director Gubarty and Director Nyberg. So if they're willing to do that, I think we'll just take a nomination from the board.
I'll make a motion to nominate Director Gubarty and Director Nyberg to the AD Committee.
Chair, all support. So movement supported. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
And then last is an appointment to the Finance Committee currently held by Director Gubarty and Director Blatman.
We just did that one right here. No negotiation. This is Finance Committee. That's where, and I got to do it for pages.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to stand. I would too.
And you served as an alternate on that too, Chair Berklich, if you were interested.
Okay, the chair, I'll make a motion.
All support.
Moved by Director Coulter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
I do have just a question in general. Is, so Director Egan is not on any of these? Does, do we have to disperse them to everybody or no?
Because last year, he wasn't like, no, he just made a motion. He wasn't there.
I don't think he wanted to be.
He didn't do anything. First choice.
Sure. Has anybody heard from him? He's interested in doing any committees?
Like, he'd never been a compromise.
I just want to hate to him not have, that's all.
And if he is interested in being on a committee later, can we just add on?
We can bring it up at the, yeah. Okay, is that everything? Yeah, I didn't think we were too. Okay, with that, we'll move to item four, motion to approve the agenda.
All move.
Support moved by Director Coulter, supported by Director Blatman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item five, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All move.
Chair, all support. Moved by Director Coulter, supported by Chair Berklich. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, we do, we do have one item to remove, item D, from the consent agenda. We're not ready to bring that recommendation forward today.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Are we doing it this way now where we don't do them separate, we do it all at one?
Yeah.
Did we decide that?
Yeah.
I don't remember deciding that, but.
I haven't said we can change it anytime.
Oh, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Yeah, Director Nyberg, we see something in advance or whatever we want to do.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Item six, both a comment.
Number three, nine, Mr. Chair.
That one with item seven, administrative reports. We'll start with the student director, Christian. Nothing. Directors?
Nothing. I have something real quick. Plans continue for the 100th celebration, 100th anniversary celebration of the high school. And I have, we have confirmed some auditorium acts. So, you know, happy to report we've got some really good, exciting things that we're going to be presenting that week of July 6th to the 13th. So I don't, I don't think I'm going to give the names right now, but I will once we firm it all up.
That's true. People keep asking me if things were on. So we have.
Yeah, they're going well. Three of the, well, all of the acts that I've helped to arrange are alumni, so that's kind of neat that we're going to hear alumni perform and sing and do their thing on the stage, so that'll be good. And then the band and choir have agreed to do a joint performance, our HHS Band and Choir. So that'll be really exciting and they're going to be in the aisles and in their new uniforms, hopefully in the band. And then as far as involving alumni in the choir or band performance, that's kind of been left up to Matt Berg and Mo Sikora. So that, that could come together too, where we have alumni in that performance also. But that's up in the air right now.
Is your group growing?
Is what?
Is your group growing?
Um, no, but we have a good core, you know, about 10 people, I'd say, come to the meetings, monthly meetings, would we say, Ken? At least, about 10, 12. So it's going well. Did you want to add something?
No, I was just going to say, did you share, Chair Berklich, that he's going to be giving the opening remarks at?
No.
As a chair of course.
Every 2004 ever.
No, it's been going well, I think. And I think when we first started, there were a lot of people because they thought it was going to be like all-class reunion.
Yeah.
And I think we've really pared it back to meaningful, manageable contents that focus around the high school and our school districts, so I think it's going well.
Yeah, we're going to, well, tell them what you did with the education, history of education. We may have a speaker.
Yes, yes. Mary Keys, who just got off the phone with her, is going to, she's got a couple of options, but speaking about the history of education on a layer range, which I think is about a 45-minute presentation, and she's going to do a second one also on like primarily the history of the auditorium, but that includes a little bit of Giving High School in the auditorium. So if people don't want to do like a tour, so we just need to figure out what we want to slot it in, but she's done those other places, so she does a base job.
Well, maybe I will. I'm excited, so maybe I will say who. Who else? Okay, so it's Will Durry has agreed. He's a kind of a recent graduate. He's going to perform. Jill Burks with her group Morningbird, she's, I don't know, early 2000 grad, maybe?
2000, yeah.
Is she, okay. And then Jimmy Hyde, who played with the Eddie Rabbit Band, he's getting his, all his old band members, Jimmy Hyde, Terry Miller, Joe Given and Louis Murray, they're all going to, they're going to put on a big performance. I'm really excited about that one because he was big, he was big time musician, Jimmy Hyde was. So, and they're all alone. So very exciting. And then we've got some other irons on the fire. We're working with some other people too, so, yeah. So it's going to be.
That sounds good, Barry. Thank you, Barry. Any other?
Speaking of a band, does anybody know, I stopped in for the band room, but there were some students in there. Do we know if they hit their target for the first of the year?
I don't. I don't.
I saw today that there was a donation, thank you, that was posted on Facebook, but, and they said on that post it was their first donation.
I didn't understand that.
I knew, but.
First donation. First donation? First donation, yeah. Okay, with that, we'll move to see committee reports. For administration, I'm sorry.
We've got Mr... I believe Mr. Turner here. Are you prepared, Mr. Turner? I know you came in late, but he was in Duluth all day for scheduling stuff.
No, I was just running from the booth, so...
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, but, no, I got back. So I... Yeah, I'm not really prepared, so if you have any questions for me. Winter is off to a great start. As you just voted on, I wanted to start that A.D. Committee. And what that committee is going to consist of is, we're going to meet three to four times a year. It'll be updates on any rule changes or anything within the Minnesota High School League that affects our student athletes and our coaches, that we'll be able to talk about it and then communicate it, not only at this meeting, but in our community, too. So, learnt about that sort of committee from some of the other A.D.s around the Iron Range and the Twin Ports. So I wanted to put that in place. Something else. I just got back from Orlando, and I was at the National A.D.'s Convention. Got a lot of good insight on some things that we should be doing within our athletics and our performing arts that we're not doing right now, that I hope to put in place within the next coming year. What else? Had a little bit of a health scare, but back on track. Ended up in ICU, ventilator for 24 hours. But, hey, we're still standing. So, but, um... As far as winter sports, our girls' and boys' basketball team are off to a pretty good start. Boys' hockey had a really good holiday tournament, finishing third. And Herb Brooks Classic, girls, not so well down at Kaposha. Finished in last place, but competed well. And just got a win last night down in Duluth. Swimming, so-so. Our numbers are a little bit down in boys' swimming, but hoping to bounce back here in the next couple of years. So just looking at some of those younger swimmers that are coming in. Thanks to Alex and Kirk for our community swim. We got a lot of young people swimming in that right now. And hopefully that'll turn over to some of our varsity and B-Squad swimming. And right now, working on spring sports. And it looks like we'll be able to get outside if the weather stays like it is.
Well, it's not going to stay.
Don't say that. I'm hoping we don't get any snow.
We'll get snow in April.
Yeah, that'll be it, and we'll be pushing everything back. Other than that, um, yeah. Well, and we're going to be hosting a lot of tournaments again here coming up this winter. I can't believe I'm already talking about Section Alpine Ski within a month. So February 6th, we'll be hosting that out at Giants Ridge. And then we'll have also Section Singularity Boys Basketball in the morning. So all that stuff is coming really fast. So, yeah. Any questions that you have with me? And I apologize for being late. So I was talking to Tree, and I reckon tell them where I was at.
Thank you. Can you share anything more about the good ideas that came out of the national convention? That you're going to try or not?
Yeah, so one thing that I really want to look at is something that a couple of the schools in Illinois do. They have coaching clinics for their head coaches and really try to have a toolage of what practice looks like, what game management looks like, and being able to serve your assistant coaches better by giving them more responsibility. So I'm hoping to implement that here this spring and late summer. So, because I just think that's something that we should be doing for our head coaches, is giving them an opportunity to grow and then help their assistants grow. And hopefully that'll turn over into us not looking for a ton of coaches in the future. Our younger coaches will become the head coaches for our varsity sports as people step down and retire. So, that's one. And then really trying to build our leadership group from our young people, from grades seven through 12, so...
And then you have a committee already on that?
Yeah.
A group or whatever?
We have a group, and just trying to meet with them more often than we do right now, so...
And what do you... Do you talk with them about, like, what?
Right now, we're talking about servant leadership and how to be a good leader, and what that looks like, and being a good teammate, and what that looks like on and off the court.
So that's the kids that are actually on the teams right now are also part of this leadership?
Yep. And it's just not athletics. So again, it's students who may be in choir.
Yeah.
And it's... So anybody can nominate a student to be a part of that. And you don't have to be a 3.0 student. You don't have to be on a row. So...
I like that idea.
I have two questions. And I think you and Miss Sikora were maybe working together on it, but any additional information on that class or course about repping for different sports?
So that's something that Mrs. Sikora was talking to me about, and that's with Wojo... Wojahowski. I always forget his full name. But Mr. Wojahowski would be in charge of that, being able to present that class maybe this spring or the following fall. So, and that's something that the state of Minnesota is really pushing for schools to do, because we have such a low number of referees. And we were just talking about that at our A.D.'s meetings, because they just came in and talked to us about not only soccer, but football is going to be really short this fall. And they're worried that we're not going to have referees for games. So, and that is just... It's mind-blowing.
And what's the reason?
People just don't want to do it.
Because and why?
A lot of it is... One is the abuse that they get from parents and fans.
Okay.
And then the other is, it's just not... The pay is not very good.
Is that the pay? I was going to say, yeah.
For the abuse, yeah.
For the abuse, it's not good enough pay.
Yeah. So if you come and do a football game for us right now, a varsity football game, you get $100.
Yeah.
And we haven't had a lot of... We haven't had a lot of it. We had a little bit in soccer, where some of our officials have been confronted as they're walking off. But in football... And I think in football, it's a little different, because they can... They go out by the shed down there.
Yeah.
And they're really not by the fans, so we haven't had a lot of it. But even at the little holiday tournament we had for the girls, I had three young men that were visiting from Lemigee that were just belligerent. And I had to ask them to leave.
In the front, you mean?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they were right there on the floor. It was just like, really? You cannot voice that type of opinion when these guys are making 75 bucks to be here over the holidays. So, yeah, it's...
It's really a problem. It really is. I mean, sports aren't going to be able to happen if we can't get refs.
Well, sports won't be able to happen if we can't get refs. And I think we do our students at this service, and maybe we just say, you can't attend if you're going to be...
If you're going to yell.
Yeah, well, you can yell and cheer.
Well, you can yell.
One thing, and you can be passionate about things that are going on. But it's different when you start being disrespectful, not only to the referees, but to the kids on the floor.
Yeah.
So, that's one problem. You had another question for me?
Yeah, was when you talk about that leadership, you know, with the athletes. I've noticed at some other schools and different sporting events that sometimes they'll have a younger athlete, you know, be announced with them, or, you know, the starting lineup, or be able to, you know, sit on the bench with them for part of the game or whatnot, to feel more like that. Do we do any of that, or is that really more so left up to each coach of each sport individually? Because I know we do a lot of things, like in-between with the young athletes, which is fantastic, but...
We haven't... Yeah, and that would be left up to a lot of the coaches. And I would say that sometimes folks don't communicate to me a lot of things that are going on in-between the game. And that's just a little frustrating, because it is... We... Sometimes we are on a time schedule when you talk about how much time you have for halftime, how much time you have between warm-ups. It is all scripted from the Minnesota High School League and game management that we have to follow. So, but, yeah, that is a good idea, to have some of those young athletes to be able to model some of the behavior that our older athletes are doing. Some of the behavior.
I feel like... I feel like at Hibbing High School, in our programs, at least basketball, for a period of time, they used to, but I felt like that was up to the coach to kind of arrange it.
So I think that's some of our, like... I know they perform sometimes at halftime, our youth, like our elementary programs. We don't do a lot of that in hockey, so I haven't seen that with... Between Pete...
Did the mini-mikes come out?
Yeah, they'll skate a little bit. And they'll form a tunnel for them, but there's not a lot of skating and stuff during... Between periods. We do have our Hibbing skaters, figure skaters in Chisholm. They'll be performing here at some of our games here at halftime, so that's coming up.
That's amazing.
I'm learning a lot about hockey and figure skating, so...
We better.
I can't skate. I can't skate, but I can't stop. Anything else?
How is the whole kind of organization or reorganization by having Travis Vaki helping with the lower-level stuff?
I... We actually... We're meeting again tomorrow morning. There's some good and there's some not-so-good, I guess, you would say. There's a couple of things that I was going to reach out to Mr. Aldridge about that I don't think I need to bring up here, but that we should probably look at moving in the future. And I say that because I'd like us to do a little more things in-house. And I was just going to approach him about that, so... But I've enjoyed working with Mr. Vaki, so it's nothing...
Very good. Thank you.
So Mrs. McDonald was following me?
No, it was Mr. Letzke, but he is not here this afternoon, so...
I was going to say, that's a hard act.
So no more?
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Any committee reports? Turned down the whole item. Team administrative business, or...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome. And it is a motion to approve the resolution to accept donations.
I'll move.
Support moved by Director Polter, supported by Director McGlaffin. Any discussions, is there?
I have a question. On here, to accept a gift of $2,500 from the girls' basketball club to support the Huddle subscription. I'm thinking that we get money from our booster clubs fairly regularly, whether it's for transportation, or whether it's for uniforms, or whether equipment. So will we see all of those on our donations and start accepting all of them? Or is this, like, a week, or I guess...
That's a good question. Because they've always supported charter buses and stuff. And they've never been on the, like, donation list.
I think they just pay those directly, don't they? Or I think it comes through you.
It does go through you, doesn't it?
We bill them for...
Yeah, and maybe I misunderstood how to put that in. Maybe it's not a donation, and when I did the list, I bet it some shit. No, I mean, like, and I think this is okay. And I think it opens up good conversation, because truly, they are donations that we give.
To the district.
To the district. And maybe we don't need it every meeting, but maybe at the end of each season or something, if each booster club, or we could get a report that shows what each booster club is contributing to.
That's a great idea.
Didn't the auditor have something like that? I thought we answered almost the same question.
Yes, conversation we had with booster clubs, she did give me an answer, just didn't get it distributed to the board yet. I'll look into that tomorrow.
So if it's... Is it like the charter buses, or what was this one for?
This is for a Huddle subscription, I think that's... Where is that for?
That's the, it's like stream.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And to your question, if there's one coming from the boys' club, it'll... I think it'll be on here, it's just a matter of we haven't got it yet, or...
So...
When is that?
I was just going to say, I could speak to that. So the Huddle subscription is... What we did is, before, every team was, like, doing something different to make sure that they could stream their games or do something. And with Huddle, we were able to put together what they call an A.D. package. And it was a lot cheaper for each team to come together and do it as one and do the A.D. package. And that's why you're seeing the clubs committed to being able to pay for it. And then we're paying for it one time only, and then it's coming from the different booster clubs. So then they're not... They're not doing... Because I think boys' basketball was paying almost $4,000. And now theirs is down to, I think, $2,500.
Yeah.
But they're getting all of the same things that they were getting before.
Oh, so that's good. So then maybe it should be combined in some way for us to see, or to... I don't know.
I just think to... Well, we are... They are donations back to the school, right? I mean, that these clubs are doing, some to a larger extent than others. Plus, maybe just to accept the gifts at the end of each season or something? Because there are other groups besides girls' basketball that are out generating funds.
Okay, so then boys' basketball, it sounds like will be giving $2,500 also. And I assume they haven't done that quite yet.
Either it was on the previous one, or it's probably...
I think they've already given their check. I think I've turned it in already. I think the boys...
So it's been on the last time's donation.
We'll double-check that, but...
Yeah, I can check that.
But they... Yeah, those checks, I think most of those checks are in. And then you'll see checks coming from track, boys' and girls' track in the spring. And the same with football. So football's camera didn't get set up. We have it, but it wasn't set up because we didn't have the Wi-Fi out there at the football field. So you'll see a donation from them in the fall, and for boys' and girls' soccer.
What about hockey?
Hockey, we couldn't put the camera in the memorial building. So they were doing something else different over there. So we didn't do through boys' and girls' hockey, and we're working on doing swimming, so...
But maybe that's something we can come up with a process, because I wouldn't want to make a ton of work for the office. But I think it'd be nice periodically to get a report and accept all the funds that all the booster clubs are contributing.
Maybe quarterly would be harder, because of different sports and...
And however, Alex and his group can get that, yes, fully efficient.
And it doesn't... Like you said, it doesn't have to be autumn. Quarterly would be perfect.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, we'll work on it, and we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you. Good question, good discussion.
Just to re-aggress this very quickly. $2,500 for girls' basketball, for the booster club, to support our subscription. $2,500 from Ben Owens Family Foundation to support a personal welder for students in industrial arts. $400 from Victoria Jacob Hagberg to support the Gay Stray Lions Club. $100 from Woodset Smith-Nalting and Association to support Lego Robotics. $100 from Jasper Engineering to support Lego Robotics. $100 from L&amp;M Radiator to support Lego Robotics. And $2,000 from AMFA to support Lego Robotics.
Is there a motion to accept donations? I'll make a motion. Motion made by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Polter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
And BA is a motion to approve a resolution to allow school board members to be covered by the school district workers' compensation insurance policy.
I'll move.
Support.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director McGlaffin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
And C is a motion to approve a corporate authorization resolutions for school district depositories, including Park State Bank, Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund, PMA Financial Network, Robert W. Behring Company, Security State Bank, Hiving, U.S. Bank, Hiving, and Wells Fargo Bank.
I'll move.
Support moved by Director Gobarty, supported by Director McGlaffin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item D, there's an amendment here. It's no longer abrupt, Anderson, Sclares, and Waldburger. It's Waldburger, Anderson, and Mace. So it's a motion to appoint the following as school district lieu council for the 2024 calendar year. Waldburger, Anderson, and Mace, PA, Colosso, Patchen, Kierney, and Brunfeld. Colosso, Patchen, Keeney, and Brunfeld, LTV, Ed Freiburger, Buchanan, Smith, and Frederick, PA.
So.
Support.
Moved by Director McGlaffin, supported by Director Polter, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign, motion carried, thank you.
Item E is a first reading policy number 606, textbooks and instructional materials and library materials.
So.
We don't need that, that's just for the first reading.
Item F is a motion to approve policy number 406, public and private personality of. Yes.
So.
Chair, all in support. Moved by Director McGlaffin, supported by Chair Berkowitz, any discussion?
I have a question. On this policy, on item F, when it talks about what, the definition of public information, it talks about a finalist, meaning an individual who's selected to be interviewed by the school board for the position, maybe we don't have an answer right now, but does that, is it like literally the school board? Because we don't really get involved in interviewing unless it would be like a superintendent, and we have in the past with the business manager. Is it, if there are finalists that is interviewed by the hiring committee? And maybe we don't need to answer that now, but I think maybe just like clarification we should. Get, I'm, I'm looking at the definition on page two.
And I, and I don't wanna, I don't, I mean, I could look into it further, but what I'm assuming here is that the board, the board delegates, delegates that responsibility to itself, and other administrators. So I would, that's assumed in that statement, right? It's the school board, you're, you're delegating that authority to the hiring committee, and those making the recommendations.
Hiring of the superintendent too.
Right, right.
And those words are from the MSBA, right?
They, they are, yeah.
And I just want to make sure we're clear, just because we do so much hiring, then I want to make sure that, you know, it's clear to both the interviewees and the, and the committee.
When somebody comes up, we can only guess it's, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign, motion carried, thank you.
Item G is a motion to approve policy number 505, student discipline and appendix A, ISD number 701, Hibbing, school district discipline, discipline complaint.
Au revoir.
Moved by Director Neiberg, supported by Director Polter, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign, motion carried, thank you.
Item H is a motion to approve policy number 506, corporal punishment and criminal restraint.
Support.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director McGlaffin, any discussion?
Yeah, and I have a question, and Director Gavardi alluded to this. What came to mind is, I'm hoping that at some point we can work with the city, I see they're advertising diligently for police, if there's anything we can do to work with the city to try to get a second SRO back in our schools, I think that would be.
They're so short on staff right now.
Maybe we could look at some help from like the IRRV or something on annual basis, or with McGlaffin, or if we'll wait on, you know, for this year or something, or some grant of some sort. There's a, there are several police grants that would help with, just something to look into, any of the school.
Well, again, just to keep it on a radar screen, I mean, I think that a second SRO really helped our school and our students in many ways, so if we can, our city and our school together can ever get back to that point.
I, I talk to Chief SD probably once every two weeks at least, and every time I speak to him, I mention that. He's still at, the last time I asked, he's, he's still at the same spot where he's understaffed for patrol officers, and just can't afford to get somebody up here for the full day, so. But I'll, I'll continue to ask, continue to. I think also coming out of the legislature here, when they come back in February, I think this is gonna get tweaked a little bit, so I think he's also kind of sitting back waiting to see what's gonna happen there, and what that language is gonna look like, so.
So has it continued where there's a patrol officer that maybe patrols more heavily around our school?
Yes.
Heck, he times?
And we, almost every morning, we have an officer that's here at the front steps. It's, it's been almost a different officer, you know, three, four officers, different officers a week, but I, that's been awesome. Lunchtime, you know, there's, there's a presence around the building, there's a presence in the memorial building parking lot. But again, that's all dependent on what's going on at the town, so. One week we might have them every day, the next week they might not be here at all, just depending on what the circumstances are.
And it does seem like the police department, Chief SD have been doing a really nice job and collaboratively with our school, so I appreciate that.
You know, Officer Holgersen does, he is in every building every day, he was here in the high school. It's just, again, that whole, that whole piece about when they can intervene and when they can't intervene, they're still, they're still nervous about that. I don't think that's ever been truly settled where they feel comfortable.
I still think it would be nice though to be updated, I know you and I have talked about that, and, you know, I think the last time it was updated was probably two months ago, month and a half ago, and just to stay up to date with that. And again, I know this puts a lot on our principal and vice principals, and, you know, whether it be hearing it from them, or from you, but just kind of knowing where that's at, because maybe there's gonna be peaks, you know, where it's higher than what it's been, or like it started out really high, then it seemed to get low and not a good point, but that can change day to day, and I know I'd like to be updated on that.
Yes, yes, and.
Keep it on the front burner.
And I don't, Mrs. Sikora did share with me, she had had, she had a document that she was sharing with Chief SD, that she's trying to clean up a little bit, so take some of the private stuff out of there, and I, I will share that with you here all very soon. And if you'd like that in a public meeting, I can share that, or I can send it out as an email, and the whole type of whatever you'd like.
Like a presentation from the RSRO?
No.
Or what do you talk, what exactly?
I'm just, you know, looking at, you know, how many.
Incidents, correctly, yes.
Incidents, okay.
Just like how average, how many a week we have, what are they, what, what kind of occurrences they are, so.
Yeah, with the nature of it.
It would be good to know that.
But I, she was working on cleaning that up and getting it, or something that I can send out, but I will do that, but I'll also get an update at the next board meeting, I'll run through those. And just, not getting the specifics, but theft, theft, for example, or maybe trespassing, I can give some numbers on those types of things.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, perfect.
Have you ever looked at using a condense in HCC to help with different things, or to come and be present? They have to put in so many volunteer hours, I know. I don't know, I don't know where they're at, I, I don't know, if it's at the college no longer.
They were here last year in some women's, I, I don't remember exactly, but they were here, I think there was half a dozen that had to get 10 hours each, I believe is what they had to get. But I think it usually occurs like in second semester, correct? Like the programming that they take, I don't think they're ready to be out here in the building in the fall, but, so we usually try to get them when they're ready. But I'll, I'll follow up on that, too.
I mean, that's, even walking through the halls occasionally in their uniforms.
Yes, yeah.
Kind of, that's a good thing.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign, motion carried, thank you, good discussion.
Item I is a motion to approve policy number 617, credit for learning.
Au revoir. Support.
Moved by Director Neiberg, supported by Director McGlaffin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign, motion carried, thank you. Item nine, good discussion.
I, I don't have any other items for the board, unless you have any questions to me.
Are we gonna have a discussion about the realignment?
We certainly can, and, I mean, other than what I've already sent out, I, we haven't done much prep or planning since then. We, as an admin team, we're gonna need next Tuesday to try to put some more specifics to it, but other than what I've already sent, nothing's really changed from what we've already talked about.
Keep us posted after every meeting, just to update.
Well, the information, the information, I sent an email.
Yes.
To you, and then I sent to, out to the district to that same information. There hasn't really been any other updates since then.
Well, hopefully I could add, because I mean.
What?
It's a big topic in a community.
It's huge.
People are like.
People are talking like crazy about it.
Say, give an update as soon as we can, and for the readings, because everybody's talking.
Yeah, there's a lot of support for it, from what I was hearing.
There's a lot of support, yeah, seems like it, yeah.
The other thing that might help is showing, we plan on saving money, cost versus savings, and the transportation issues, part of the savings, so.
Have we worked that out, Alex? Have you ever sat down and looked at transportation and how we are gonna save, or what estimate, or whatever?
So we, we were working with Mr. Watson, he's just starting.
We're still in negotiations.
Oh, yeah, that's just kind of his expertise, isn't it?
I think, you know, we talked about going out for a broader day, and we're still just getting started on that process, too, so.
Okay.
And the other thing I just bring up, just for transparency, is the posting for the students?
Yes, yes, so.
And internal posting.
I was gonna ask a question around that. Is that mainly because of how we are gonna realign, or is it because, I mean, we obviously had a principal and a vice principal there before, but is Mr. Gavardi, is he hanging in there okay right now, or is it, is it a struggle being the only one?
It, it's very much.
Are we supporting him if he is struggling right now?
You know, Mrs. Husko has, has been there and been supporting him a couple of days a week. Brian Yertich, again, has kind of stepped up. We have some, some teachers within the building that are working on administrative licensure, I think that are also helping him out and supporting him. But it, it is a struggle, I mean, there's almost 700 students in that building, and that, and that customer service that we give to parents and to staff, when there's an issue, it, when it, something doesn't get dealt with that day, or doesn't get dealt with immediately, it just creates all kinds of other issues and problems for everybody involved. So to have somebody that replies to a teacher when they have a concern about a student, or replies to a parent when they're in the office that day, it's hard to do with one person. So, I think he's struggling, he's, he's getting by, he was, you know, he was hoping, he was excited about Christmas break, but he's got a good attitude, and I think he's really got the support of his staff there, too, in his building, I think they're, they're supportive of him. And this, this again, I mean, I know I talked with you prior, when we made this switch, when Mrs. McDonald took the director position, when Chisholm added their contribution, or continued to contribute more, not replacing Mickey Brown in that role, we're still under that threshold where we're about to break even by adding back a, some support for Mr. Gavardi for the rest of the year. But this, I would like to see going forward, especially if this restructure happens, and the way that we're describing it, in seventh grade, it could potentially be in that building, that we look at going back to an assistant principal, a full-time assistant principal for the fall, would be my recommendation.
On top of having a dean of students?
No, 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 the dean, this dean position would just be for the remainder of the year, we'd go back to the same administrative setup that we had prior to the, to the change.
And can you just tell me what the difference is, just I actually don't know the difference between a dean of students and a vice principal of vice principals?
So a big thing that a dean can't do is a dean can't supervise staff, so they can't be in doing observations for staff. They, they can discipline, but, you know, those bigger discipline issues need the input of the head principal, need to be signed off by the head principal, the suspensions, the reentry meetings, those type of things. But the dean provides more of a day-to-day support. It's probably lower-level disciplinary issues, more like detention type things, or, or playground issues, where I think the head principal would take the heavy hitter, we're talking about suspensions, or the reoccurring student issues that we have, that would be more of the head. This, this would be, you know, liaison with teachers. It, it is, it is a bit of a compromise not having somebody with a principal's license in that role, because there's some things that we can't do, but we've talked through all that, Derek and I have talked through all that, and he's confident that he's fine for the rest of the school year, but he would really like to see, especially if this move happens, that we post for assistant sometime over the summer, and then find a qualified candidate this summer.
Well, what kind of education do they need, the dean of students?
They just have to have a teaching license.
Oh, teaching license.
Just a teaching license.
So is, do we think that one of our own teachers is gonna apply for this?
So our, our posting is internal right now, so it's.
Oh, it's just, so we're thinking a teacher's probably gonna end up getting this, which means then what, a long-term sub in the classroom, or?
Just depends on what position they're coming from, yeah.
Well, if it's a teacher.
If, if it's a teacher, yes, we'd have to fill that classroom.
Then we'd have a long-term sub for the rest.
Yep, if it's somebody that doesn't have kids in front of them all day, some other type role, then we'd have to reevaluate it, but.
Didn't we post though that we wanted somebody with an administrative licensure, or working on administrative?
Yes, that's, that's, it did say that on there.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, technically, to be a dean of students, you don't have to have any administrative training whatsoever. So again, we would, we have quite a few people in the district that are licensed principals that are, that are working as teachers in the district, so I'm hoping one of them will apply, is what my hope is.
With the idea, with the idea they'd become the assistant principal in the future, is that the idea?
Correct, well.
Just thinking ahead.
No, I, I would say that any, this, nothing is guaranteed. Whoever takes his dean position, we would just start from scratch again, and post, and, and look for the most qualified applicant for the assistant.
But it would be valuable if they tried for six months?
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, and we go back to the realignment, I mean, as we know it, I, I think there's just a lot of buzz in the community, right? And like, nothing has been finalized yet, but I think a lot of conversation and question come around, like that whole definition of middle school, and as Chair Berkowitz said at the last meeting, there's no real hard and fast definition. Within our building structures and the numbers or capacity, would there be any possible way to have like seventh and eighth grade as part of the middle school, or eighth grade included in the middle school, or would our buildings not be configured?
That's what I wanted to see.
If you could take fourth grade out, I mean, that, to me, that would be, put that somewhere.
That's why I didn't make any comments for the Tribune, because I wanted to see from the administrative side, the architectural structure, or not the structure, but how many you could have in a certain school, certain grades, and then the cost versus that. So, once we see that, then we'll have better, then we reopen for a lot of comments, I suppose, or suggestions, in case something missed something.
Yet that, you know, currently, the way, the way that we had described, you know, a potential reconfiguration where the Washington would be a key, one building, and the Greenhaven would be a 2-3 building, and the Lincoln would be a 4-7 building, that fits, but we have enough space. To do, to put any other student groups in any of those buildings would, would take some kind of construction, or some kind of addition, or mobile space, or leased, leased classroom space, or something like that. And that would defeat our whole purpose, right? I mean, the, the idea here is, you know, the direction from, from our, the board and our finance committee is we have to make reductions, you know, a minimum of a million dollars. And I'm, I'm trying to do that as fairly and transparently as possible with our staff, so they, so they understand that we, yes, we have to make some cuts. But I also am working on, on another angle, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping that, you know, this can come to fruition. If we could provide some incentives for some of our more senior staff to retire early and then not replace those positions, that would be the best scenario, because the, those young teachers at the bottom that would potentially be non-renewed, we've got some great young people here, we don't want to lose them, they're, they're great teachers, so. Not that we want to lose our teachers on the top, man, that's not what I'm saying, but.
A lot of knowledge on the top.
But, but if we could, if we could potentially entice some people near the top that are close to retirement to go, we wouldn't have to lay anybody off.
I mean, I said, are we working on, because we were told we were gonna see that, the enticement of the older, to retire.
I'm, I'm still working on it.
You're still working on it.
It's in statute, I, I have to, I, I have to make sure that I do it in a fair and preferable way, so I'm, I'm working through that. And the other thing would be, you know, again, I don't want any incentive, you know, it needs to make sense. any incentive, you know, it needs to make sense financially that that we're, that we're continuing to save money in the process, so.
Is there interest, do you think?
I think there would be interest. I think, I think there is interest from staff. I mean, I, I don't know what, what, what's a fair incentive that would entice someone, I don't know. But that's what, that's what I'm kind of trying to work through and figure out.
Are you talking to the teachers union about it at all?
I have a meeting with Ms. Lynn Genke tomorrow.
On a positive note, though, through all of this, and I feel like in the last couple of weeks, I've talked to a lot of people for a lot of different reasons. But I really feel like so many people are contributing our principals, our teachers, everything we have going on in all our schools. It just really, I mean, I appreciate everything, all the work that everybody's doing. And even on our consent agenda, to see a longtime teacher, a talented teacher come back and, you know, be an academic interventionist, I mean, that's amazing.
Amazing.
So I think a kudos to all our teachers and our principals.
I will say, I love the idea of all the kindergarten teachers being in one place. Because that leads to good collaboration. All the students hopefully are gonna get the same education versus having, I don't know, what is it? Three, three or four classrooms at Washington, three or four at Greenhaven. Now we have eight classrooms at the Washington. All the kindergartners are doing the same stuff. And being educated very similarly, you know, obviously teacher differences. But, you know, the same curriculum, the same, it's, it's gonna be awesome. I think that's gonna be a tremendous improvement. I love that idea.
I mean, change is, change is hard.
Yeah.
That's, it's, it's not fun and people, people. I think it's a completely different conversation when you're talking about restructuring existing buildings than what happened here 20 years ago when buildings were closing and the controversy. This isn't about closing a building, this is just about reconfiguring who was in each building.
There'll be a lot of discussion coming along.
Yes.
Before we approve it, we're gonna be talking more probably. Yes. And then with what Boys and Girls Club, is the plan to get it out with the Greenhavens? Cause we need that room for the second, third graders?
So if this, if this worked out the way that we described it in the email that I sent. The Boys and Girls Club would come here to the high school.
To the high school.
That, that's our, that's our plan today.
Which I think. I gotta be careful, but I know that there was conversation last summer about, about the hours of the Boys and Girls Club. And I think at that time, it would have been, there would be opportunity to keep it open longer at the high school, if that works out. So I think that the Boys and Girls Club staff is thrilled.
Are they?
Oh, they're thrilled. If they could get classroom space and they're talking about other programming and, yeah, they're thrilled.
And there's room here?
Well, if, if the seventh grade were to go to the Lincoln, then it absolutely.
Absolute room, yeah.
So seventh grade, is home ec and shop, are those electives in seventh grade or is that in eighth grade elective?
Seventh grade, I believe, has home ec, but not shop. Eighth graders have shop.
And I'm sure you're taking that into consider, or it's being talked about in this whole reconfiguration and how we would still accommodate that if the seventh grade were still.
Well, that'd be a discussion. I don't, I, I mean, so the, the different look that it would be, I mean, for seventh graders at the Lincoln is they wouldn't be on a bell schedule like in the high school. It would be more like a homeroom. Right? You have a homeroom teacher and then you have a teacher you might go to for reading or a teacher you might go for math. We still have to provide prep time for that teacher. Right? It might not necessarily be home ec. Depending on I think it could be more art or it could be more fayette or it could be more music. It might not be home ec.
So that's to be determined. Will all, will the Lincoln be run as a, in that way for the sixth grade and the fifth grade too? Where you have the homeroom and then you go to your science teacher or your math teacher?
Well, they, they do that, sixth grade does that a little bit right now.
Right.
They've, they've gotten a little bit more where they're a contained classroom and they're doing more where one teacher's teaching the reading and one teacher's teaching the math, but they still do switch. The, the trouble with the switching is it creates issues with providing specialist time. It just makes the schedule harder. So if we all taught a classroom, we just have our own kids all day and we're not switching, then we don't have to fight that schedule, right? So then it's easy, it's easy to get a prep time, it's easy to get figuring your lunch or figuring recess. But I think Derek, Derek really would need to work with the staff and come up with a plan that's best for that age group and best for those kids. What is, I think it's giving them some freedom and giving them some, some opportunity, but it's, it's more guided than it is currently here in the high school. Be more of a teacher-led experience than here. I see the seventh graders when they come and the bell rings and there's just lots of confusion in seventh grade faces and lots of, you know, their hands are on each other, they're, they're because you don't always have a teacher over you saying, hey, no, congrats to yourself, or you know. They just get a little freedom and they go a little wild sometimes, so. So I think that'll be, you know, just for their, their, their intellectual ability, their maturity, their development to, to create programming that is tailored to them. Rather than fitting what a high school needs to look like, bell schedule needs to look like. It, it could be powerful.
And maybe treat the sixth grade the same, possibly?
Right. Yeah. You know, we talked about maybe a wing, like a middle school wing, maybe that's a sixth, seventh wing. You know, a little bit separate from the fourth. It's still just, I mean, there's a lot of broad ideas. You know, I wouldn't say anything set in stone yet.
I like those words, like guided opportunity, like guided freedom.
Controlled controlled freedom.
I think Mrs. McDonald would like to.
I just, I just wanted to clarify one thing because we're actually doing our registration presentation tonight for seventh through eleventh grade students for next year. So eighth graders next year would get shop, our fax and fayette. So instead of having that fax piece in seventh grade, cause they're gonna be able to Lincoln, they'll get it in eighth grade. So they're not losing any programming, it's just shifting what it would look like. So in case anybody out there was wondering, you know, if there was concern about the fax or whatever, they're going to get that, it would be in the eighth grade.
How is that fit, how did you fit that in? What was taken, had to be taken out?
Well, there was some other electives, I think, that were offered, might have been.
To eighth graders?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, they don't.
Thank you for that.
I would imagine with like seven hours, well, that would leave that one. Carrie, what time is the registration presentation?
But right now, normally you would have fax in seventh and eighth, correct? And both years? Some took, if all kids would get it in seven, some kids take it as an extra length of the eighth.
Okay, so that elective is probably what had to be eliminated to fit. Yeah. Well, that's okay.
Okay, lots more discussion will follow in the months. Okay, Director Volter.
Motion for adjournment.
Without objection, that's 450 beings adjourned. I'd like to thank everybody that attended.